If he doesn't.
May team at six o'clock. Taylor, ready to roll?
We need to start at six.
All one word.
Taylor?
Yes. I'm gonna go, uh, I'll let you, I guess, are you gonna start the meeting, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mike is calling in right now.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Padilla's logging in.
We'll wait for Padilla to log in before we start.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. All right, bye-bye.
Hmm? Was that a second?
Mike, not to the bathroom.
Okay, uh, we're ready whenever you guys are.
Hey, Mike, before we start, if you go on your picture, I don't think you want that number showing. There's three little dots.
Yep.
And you could rename yourself so that the phone number doesn't show up. Before we start.
Got it?
Awesome. All right, ready to go.
You see him?
Okay, we're ready whenever you guys are ready.
Okay, ready, go. We now call this meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilman Padilla to make the introduction for the invocation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Father Tim Hebbecorn for providing the invocation for us this evening. Uh, he preferred to come in in person. I appreciate that. Uh, Father Tim is well-known in the city. He's a native of Topeka, and he currently leads services at our Sacred Heart Catholic Church and the newly restored St. Joseph Catholic Church. Father Tim, thank you.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we ask for your blessings upon our city council members as they come together for this meeting. Grant them the gifts of wisdom, knowledge, and compassion as they discern and respond to the needs of our local community. May all that they say and do reflect your great glory. We also pray that during this pandemic, you may shed your light of healing and consolation to all people. Bring your strength and protection, especially to all those in the medical field, our doctors, nurses, first responders, all public safety officials, and to all who are sacrificing to serve others. Help us put our continued trust in you and that by the power and source of your grace, you will lead all of humanity into the hope, life, peace, and healing that you bring. And grant this through our compassionate and merciful Lord. Amen.
Amen. We now proceed to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We now proceed to the roll call.
Mayor DeLausso?
Here.
Councilmember Hiller?
Here.
Councilmember Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Councilmember Emerson?
Here.
Councilmember Padilla?
Here.
Councilmember Nager?
Here.
Councilmember Dobler?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Lesser?
Here.
We now proceed with the board appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mary Swaybus to the Civil Service Commission to fill a vacant position ending March 16th, 2024. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Robert Bosch, to the, Baush, I'm sorry, to the City of Topeka Board of Electrical Appeals for a term ending December 31st, 2021. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Kelsey Savage to the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board for a term ending December 31st, 2021.
We have heard the appointments. The mayor does not vote. What is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval.
Second. Councilman Dobler moves approval, a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion on this item, we proceed to vote by roll call.
Hiller? Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Lesser?
Yes.
Nine, zero.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, we move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout repealing the previously adopted resolution authorizing the initiation of litigation against the manufacturers of prescription opiates. B is ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout allowing approving and approving city expenditures for the period February 1st, 2020 through February 29th, 2020, and enumerating said expenditures therein. C is minutes of the regular meeting of March 10th, 2020, and the special meeting of March 26th, 2020. And I have a list of open after-midnight licenses, uh, applications for Cyrus Hotel located at 920 South Kansas Avenue, Happy Basset located at 6044 Southwest 29th Street, IHOP located at 1731 Southwest Wanamaker Road, Jeremiah Bullfrogs 2940 Southwest Wanamaker Road, Love's Travel Stop 1811 Northwest Brook Yard Road, Skate Away 815 Southwest Fair Lawn, Specks Bar and Grill 2105 Southwest Mission, Telgators 2025 Southwest Yerish Road, The Car Wash 720 Southwest Gage Boulevard, The Car Wash 1814 Southwest 10th Avenue, The Pennant 915 South Kansas Avenue, The Spot Tavern 2022 O2 Southwest Buchanan Street, and T-Pac at 214 Southeast 8th Avenue.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body?
Mayor, I move approval.
We have a motion for approval by the deputy mayor?
My second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Comments or questions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting, uh, by, by voting with the roll call.
Mayor DeLausso?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Lesser?
Yes.
Ten voting yes, the motion carries. At this point in time, we move into the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is a public hearing and ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout relating to the vacation of 150 linear feet of public alley right-of-way, 20 feet in width extending west from southwest Tyler Street and adjacent to property located at 623 Southwest 10th Avenue in the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. These items tonight are from our last planning and zone, or Planning Commission. Um, and I'll let Bill Finder go through each of the items and introduce them. So, first one is the vacation of the public right-of-way. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Uh, the first proposal is a vacation of a existing city public alley. Uh, the, the location is at the southwest corner of 10th and Tyler. The, you may remember this, this was the former site of Pepe and Chili's Restaurant. It has been demolished and acquired by the property owner, Kansas Medical Mutual Insurance. Uh, they own all sides of the alley there and would like to reconfigure their parking and drive access. Uh, and accommodating that would be very helpful if, if we could vacate the, the alley. Uh, the city does not have any use. There are no utilities involved. Uh, there are no other property owners affected, so we would recommend a motion to approve the ordinance to vacate the alley.
All right, so at this point in time, um, if there is no questions for Bill?
Make a motion to approve.
Well, actually, before we do that, this is a public hearing, so before we, we go, we go any further, um, we have to see if anybody, um, has, we, we don't have anybody in the public or signed up to speak. Um, but we have to open it as a public hearing, so just making sure that we allow anybody that's online to, to talk on this issue. Going once. Going twice. All right, nobody is here to speak at this point in time. Uh, we have a motion by Councilman Padilla. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Nager or Valdivia?
Nager.
Okay, so we have a second. Um, any discussion on this item? Councilwoman Ortiz, Councilman, uh, Deputy Mayor Emerson, can you take this meeting for just a few minutes? I have a really critical call on the other line.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Uh, Councilwoman Ortiz, you had a question or comment?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I would just like to know, when is the sign coming down on Pepe and Chili? I mean, you know, we, they're, the building's down, but we still have the sign up there. And I know people that have been over there looking for it, you know, have called me and asked me about that.
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Ortiz, you'll be happy to know, uh, they will be taking the sign down eventually. The, the requirement to take the sign down, uh, actually, you approved as a council, uh, it wouldn't kick into October 1st, but we have, we have let them know that if they are going to do anything there with their parking lot improvement, that we would expect it to come down before that. Uh, but at the latest, uh, it would be required starting October 1st, when abandoned signs such as this would be informed.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, uh, anyone else? Any other comments or questions from the, uh, rest of the council?
I do, Deputy Mayor. My question is that Pepe's and Chili's, that, um, property has been purchased by, um, the new, has it been purchased by the, um, I'm sorry.
Amco.
Yeah, Kansas Medical Mutual Insurance is the, is the owner.
Okay, so that is technically under their...
Yeah, yes, they, they, you're welcome.
Okay. Social distancing has really messed with my ability to verbalize thoughts, so thank you for your patience. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilwoman Nager. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right, uh, hearing none. Um, I guess I'd ask the city attorney, is it appropriate to go ahead and vote without the mayor on this?
Yes, you may do that.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard me or not, but as a court, if, if it's okay to go ahead and vote without the mayor on this?
Deputy Mayor, you may go ahead and vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Robertson. Um, so I would, uh, it's been, uh, we have a motion that's has been, uh, seconded, so I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Lesser?
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Okay, nine to zero, the motion passes. If the clerk could please read the next action item?
B is an ordinance authorizing annexation for property located at 2030 Southeast 41st Street within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the City of Topeka, Corporate Limits Shawnee County, Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Um, Detective Finder will, uh, go ahead and go through this one as well related to the annexation.
Thank you again. Uh, as, as you heard, this proposal involves, uh, the property owner, which is Crossroad Wesleyan Church requesting an annexation of their property. It's attractive land of 29 acres at the, um, northwest corner of 41st, Southeast 41st in California. They are developing a new church and parking lot on the, a smaller two-acre portion of this site at the, uh, the southwest corner of the site. So what, uh, what is before you is, uh, their annexation is really required because they are in an area of City of Topeka Utilities Service. Uh, there is a, they, and they have, are required to connect as part of their development. That includes water, which runs along California in front of their property. Uh, the owners will have to extend sewer across California from the west, which actually will open up, uh, some potential for development down the road on that side of the street. The property is contiguous with the city limits. It is also within what we call our tier two of urban, of the urban growth area. Uh, what that really means is it's basically pre-approved for annexation, uh, once the area, once the site gets, uh, developed. So that's what's happening here. Um, it's, it really fills in a gap of the city between, to the north and to the south. Uh, that is already in the city. Uh, the roads will be in place. Uh, California will be improved here in the next year or so. Uh, 41st, uh, is not being improved, but they have agreed to be, or to not object to being part of a benefit district for future development of 40, or improvement of 41st. Uh, you also have police and fire that are already servicing the area, uh, in the neighborhoods to the north and to the south there. So our services and, and infrastructure are already here. Um, it, it, it fills out a gap, as I said, in the, in our boundaries, so we do, um, recommend approval of this annexation. The Planning Commission, uh, did find this to be consistent with our land use and growth management plan, so, uh, if there are any questions, I can help at this time.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Mr. Finder? Um, I'm not hearing any, so, um, I would ask, this is also requires a public hearing, is that correct?
No, it isn't. No public hearings required on this one, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, in that case, what is the pleasure of the council?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Duncan. I've asked the clerk to, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Okay, by nine to zero, the motion passes. The annexation passes. Uh, the clerk could please read the next item?
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout amending the district map referred to and made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on a 2.2 acre portion of property located at 2030 Southeast 41st Street, the northeast corner of Southeast California Avenue and Southeast 41st Street, from RR1 Residential Reserve District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District.
Thank you, clerk. Uh, City Manager?
Um, thank you. Now that the, uh, re, the, uh, annexation is complete, there is a requirement to change the, the zoning, and I'll let, uh, Bill explain what that zoning changes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is pretty standard. Uh, when we bring, uh, a new property into the city and annex it, uh, we default to our, what we would call our, uh, most restrictive zoning district, uh, from a residential sense. That's the single-family R1 district. So that would cover the, um, that would cover the, uh, developable sites where the church building is going up, uh, at, at the corner there, that two-acre site. So what is being proposed is a new zoning for the church building site of two acres. The remainder of the property will remain in what we call residential reserve zoning, uh, for a future date to be rezoned when there is, uh, development on that site. If there are any que, we are recommending approval, and if there are any questions, I can help.
Any questions for Mr. Finder?
Motion to appro-
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, on this one, um, folks just need to identify if they've had any ex parte contact on this particular issue.
But, but no public hearing on this either, correct?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, I will start then. Uh, this is in my district, and I did attend the, uh, neighborhood meeting, uh, which you can see in the packet. There was no objections, uh, to anyone, including the next-door neighbor. Uh, but, never, irregardless of that, I'm able to render an impartial decision. Councilwoman Hiller?
Um, I did not have any. I had some questions from people about the annexation issue, but I had nothing about the zoning.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
None, to my rec-
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I skipped over Christine. I'm sorry.
Christina? Oh, none.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
None, to my recollection.
Mr. Padilla?
None, thank you.
Um, I'm trying, uh, Councilwoman Nager?
None.
All right, uh, Mr. Duncan?
All good here, none. And I guess, Mr. Dobler, I skipped.
That's all right. It's happened before. I had no communication.
And lastly, but certainly not least, Mr. Lesser?
None.
All right, uh, we had a motion to approve, I believe, by Councilwoman Ortiz. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Dob. I'd ask the clerk then to call the roll.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Okay, by a vote of nine, uh, nine to nothing, it passes. Clerk, could please read the next?
A is a presentation by the Shawnee County Health Officer.
All right, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Given the ongoing situation we're dealing with with the coronavirus, we thought it would be good to have Dr. Pizzino join us tonight and provide an update, um, to us and obviously to the community that's tuning in. And so, uh, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pizzino.
Yes, thank you, City Manager and, uh, City Council and, uh, Mayor. Good, uh, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, give you an update on our coronavirus situation. Let's start with the numbers. Uh, as of this afternoon, Shawnee County has 47 positive cases confirmed. Um, we have 813 negative tests that were done and still 54 pending. Unfortunately, we have three deaths in the county, but we also have five people who have recovered and, uh, have been released from care. So we are definitely finding more cases, and, uh, one of the reasons is most probably because the infection is spreading in our community. But the other reason is because we are looking harder. And I want to show you, if I can share my screen, I want to show you a couple of charts. Can you see the charts? Okay. So at the top, you see the number of tests per day they were done on Shawnee County residents. And you can see, we, we really started to push for more testing. Now, now putting aside all the issue, the limitation of the availability of the testing kits and, and so on and so forth, that was a big challenge, still is. But around the middle of, uh, March, we started to push really hard for more testing to take place in Shawnee County. And, uh, as you can see on the, the week of the, uh, actually on the day of the 18th and then the 20th, we really had a peak, 51 to 33 tests done. Five or six days later, that's why you see, um, a peak in our case. So our first cases were detected on 25th of May, and you can see that we had more testing that started on the 18th of May. So that confirmed my, um, let's stop the sharing. That confirms my assumption that, uh, I made public, uh, you know, during our regular press conferences, that we already have the virus in our community. We shouldn't be complacent just because we did not have any detected positive result, and we had to take strict actions to, uh, stop the transmission, even though we didn't know exactly the magnitude of the transmission. We didn't know how, uh, the transmission was taking place and where. Uh, I want you to know that we will find more cases. Don't be surprised. There will be more cases coming up in the next couple of weeks for the same two reasons. In part because we still have transmission, and the transmission is probably still increasing. We'll talk about the issue of peak in a moment. But because we are also planning to test even more, just yesterday, we, uh, issued a recommendation to all the providers in the county to adopt different testing criteria from what they have been using so far, so that we will essentially try to test everybody with a cough and a fever. Um, and as you can imagine, that can increase the number of people that we test dramatically compared to the, the criteria that we had before. So we know from experience, the more we look for the virus, the more we're gonna find it. And the virus is still spreading and being communicated in our community. So don't be surprised, don't be alarmed. There will be more positive test results back. Um, as you know, we have implemented a variety of social distancing measures in our county. Um, we started with banning public gatherings. We then closed schools. We then closed restaurants and bars, and we are now into the second week of our safer-at-home, uh, order. Many of these things also have been ordered statewide, but we were ahead. We really took a very proactive approach, and we thought that, uh, it is difficult to take these decisions in a blanket fashion statewide in a timely manner because the situations at the local level are different. And so if I put myself in the shoes of the administration and the Secretary of Health and Environment, I can see their dilemma. Do I put some kind of restriction statewide just because I have clusters in Johnson County? Or should Johnson County put more restrictions in place than, say, uh, you know, Gulf County or some other small counties in the West? Then a point comes where you really need something statewide, just for the sake- just for the sake of uniformity and to protect everybody. So, we were always a few days ahead, three to five days ahead of where the state was with our restrictive measures. And I have good news for you. It's working. It's working more than I thought. This is Gage Park, Sunday afternoon. Gorgeous Sunday afternoon, spring day. I was taking a walk with my wife, and there were a few people walking, which is not only allowed but encouraged. But look at this playground. Now, ordinarily, on a good spring Sunday afternoon, that place would be packed. There was nobody there. So, that's reassuring to me because sometimes we tend to be negative, and our people, our staff are receiving a lot of reports of this business is doing wrong, and, you know, I saw five people here that were congregating. All these measures are not perfect. I recognize that. And we will never have 100% of compliance unless we want to institute the military state, which we don't. But some is better than none. And some more is better than little. And we are at the point where I believe the social distancing in Topeka and Shawnee County has been practiced by most people, not by everybody, but by most people. And this is not the time to drop our guard. If we keep doing what we are doing, we will get out of this in a much better shape than places that have started to implement the restrictive measures later or where they don't implement those measures and those measures are not followed. There is a little compliance compared to Shawnee County. So, you keep hearing about the peak, when is going to be happening, our peak? That's really hard to estimate. It's think about a weather forecast, if you will. The closer you get to the day that you want to know what the weather is going to be like, the more exact the forecast is going to be, right? We can probably tell pretty accurately what the weather is going to be like tonight and probably even tomorrow. But next week, the week after next, that's harder. The same applies to these models. These estimates of the peak are all based on models that have a variety of assumptions behind them. You know, how much the disease is spread, how mobile people are, how much they comply with the orders of local authorities. So, those models are more accurate for the immediate estimate, but not for estimates that go, you know, two, three, four weeks or months down the road. The best estimates I've seen is there may be another couple of weeks before we peak on our cases. But I want to tell you, I'm not terribly concerned about when we peak. I'm more concerned about how we peak. I'm sure you have seen, I suspect you have seen some charts coming from even counties not far from here, you know, Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Missouri. And you see their charts, and they, you know, they start going up a little bit, and then they go up more sharply, and then they go up, they're almost vertical. That is a situation that I really hope we can avoid here. Our numbers so far are going up, but they're going up gradually and steady. And the steady part is important. If we get into what people call exponential growth, which means the cases double every two to three days, that's where you're going to have a problem. Our hospitals have been very good, very proactive, and they still can accommodate the needs for the patients that are diagnosed with coronavirus and probably the needs, I'm confident the needs for the patient will be diagnosed in days to come. Unless we get into the kind of exponential growth, then it's going to be much harder for them. And the way to avoid that is to just stay the course. The safest place to be is home. I admire and I applaud your counsel for deciding to not hold in-person meetings. That was the right thing to do, and you did it early in time, and you did absolutely the right thing. You modeled what we are telling our citizens to do. What's ahead? The state order is in place until the 19th of April. When I say the state order, I mean the stay-at-home order. They may or may not decide to expand it. I don't know. I have no insights into that. If that order is let expire, there is a county order that we issued before the state order that remains in effect until the 26th. And at this point, I do not anticipate that we will make changes to that order. So, it would be an automatic process the moment, because that's included in the state order. The state order says that the moment the state order expires, then pre-existing local orders will become effective again. So, we will be in this situation until at least the 26th. I don't want to go into too many details because I want to be respectful of your time, but I want you to know we are working very, very hard to prepare for that date. It was hard enough for me, for us as a team, to decide that we would adopt these ordinances. But I'm going to tell you, the hardest decisions are ahead because we will have to decide when the time is to lift the ordinances. And, you know, the safest route would be, oh, you know, just as we said, let's keep another week or two in place. Sure, we can do it, but we are nothing different to the human and economic costs that these orders are causing on our population. So, I don't want to keep these things in place one minute more than necessary. So, we have a series of parameters that we will examine in the next couple of weeks to see what measures can be lifted right away, what measures maybe need to stay to remain in place a little bit longer. I can already tell you that it's not going to be an all-or-nothing type of thing. It's probably going to be incremental. We are going to start lifting some measures and then monitor the situation for, you know, maybe a week or two, and then we'll lift additional measures. And then, you know, we just monitor and see what happens, and we will be ready to put those measures back in place if we notice signs of deterioration in terms of increased transmission. So, let me repeat, this is not the time to lower the guard, but we will not ask our citizens to make these efforts and sacrifices one minute longer than it is necessary. And I want to finish with a note of hope. There is always a silver lining in every traumatic and crisis situation. And I'm sure we will find some more later on, but there is one that is already very obvious to me. And the silver lining is the ability that city and county officials and community partners have shown to work together. Our mayor has been nothing but incredible in leading the efforts of the city. I have been in this position as health officers before, as officer for about 13 years, and I've been in smaller, I will admit, but crisis mode before. Never have I seen the level of collaboration between our county and our city. And I really want to give Mayor De La Isola a big recognition of her role in this because without her leadership, this would not have happened. So, hopefully, this is a relationship that we can build on and that we can keep going even when we do have this absolutely horrific virus and crisis that is affecting our lives. That's all the remarks I wanted to share. Really appreciate your time, and should you have any question, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions for Dr. Pizzino?
Do you have a question?
Councilwoman Nager? Councilwoman Nager, Councilwoman Hiller, then Councilman Lesser. I'll call on you guys.
First of all, a huge thank you for all of the coordination that's happening at the city level with our city government officials who are coming into work, city manager, assistant city manager, the mayor, and of course, you, Dr. Pizzino. I thank you so much for coordinating all of this. My concern is how responsible are the hospitals in Shawnee County for citizens of counties in the surrounding areas for testing and treating them? And are we ready to take on that additional burden as we go forward?
Yes. Obviously, hospitals will not turn patients away based on their residence. So, and as we all know, our two hospitals do act as a referral point for many of the communities surrounding Topeka and Shawnee County. Both hospitals have been making plans based on the assumption that we will that they will have to care, not just for the Shawnee County residents, but also for people in the communities surrounding Shawnee County. They have worked very, very hard. They are making a lot of progress. You know, we always said when we were trying to diminish and slow down the spread of this virus, we always said, I always said to anybody who want to listen, we're not going to stop it. We are just, don't be delusional. Just because we don't have it in this case yet, and everybody else around us, even smaller counties, were already reporting cases already here, we are not going to stop. All we are doing is buying time. And the reason that's important because that time gave our two hospitals the opportunity to do a lot of things, some of which most people don't even know. They are restructuring entire wings to turn dozens of rooms into ICU rooms. They are frantically trying to acquire more ventilators. They have researchers and statisticians working hard to do their own projections. So, you know, we had a projection at the state level, the national level, when is this going to peak? How many cases? They are trying to model the same projections at the county level to see what the gap is between resources that are available now and resources that may be needed when we reach the peak of the infection. So, we, I think it's not by accident that our healthcare system in Shawnee County ranks number five in the state. We have two hospitals that are incredible. They are both very active, and they are making really miracles to get ready to assist just about everyone who will show up at their door front.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino. And let's not forget the VA Hospital as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to just offer kudos and credit to the mayor, to Dr. Pizzino, and the whole team. It's been phenomenal to watch how we've come together and how well this, not just the leaders, certainly the leaders and the people that have put out the hard decisions, but that the community has come together as well, people delivering meals and so on. I feel funny in a way, just safe at home, managing life and so on. Could you touch a little bit on, we know that flu seasons come and go. We have a history here of having a flu season every winter. Is there, is there any sort of prediction or confidence at this point about whether, once we run it, run through this round, whether we should expect a seasonal, a recurrence?
Nobody really knows if this virus will exhibit a level of seasonality, the kind of seasonality that the influenza virus does. They are two very different viruses. Even though the symptoms are very similar, they belong to different families. They're just different types of viruses. And this is a totally novel virus. That's why it's causing a pandemic, right? Because everybody in the world is susceptible. So, there is just no way to know how the virus is going to behave until we see how the virus is going to behave. Having said that, there are many people that believe that there will be some seasonality. But this is, there are even perhaps more people that believe that there will be at least a second wave. And one of the reasons is that due to the efforts in many Western countries to contain the virus, including the United States, of course, and Europe, the infection is probably going to go into negative growth, meaning that every case of the disease will infect fewer than one person. And what that means is that over time, then you're going to have fewer and fewer cases. That's good. The so, not-so-good part of the story is that it still leaves a lot of people not immune because they haven't been infected. So, there is really no other way to build immunity at the population level except for one vaccine or two natural infection. So, the fewer people we have infected now, the better it is, of course, for everybody and for our healthcare system in particular. But that, the other side of the coin is that we have more people that then will be susceptible in the fall. And many people, I'm going to see more and more intelligent people that I trust saying, we should prepare for a second wave of cases. But again, we have more time to prepare. Just buying times in a situation like this is going to be everything. So, I want to be clear. I'm not predicting that come fall, we are going to have to shut down schools and keep everybody home again. I'm not predicting anything, but I wouldn't be surprised if we still have the virus among us, even have outbreaks of the virus among us. But our ability to contain those outbreaks, both using public health measures and of our healthcare system to address the people who are sick would be much higher than it has been so far.
Thank you, Dr. Pizzino. Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say thank you, doctor, as well as to Linda and Dusty, and if he happens to be watching, Dr. Kniege, who sends us an update every day, which is very helpful. I've received several calls, and I wanted to get your opinion, doctor, on the farmer's market that's going to take place this weekend. I had actually had asked Legal and Ms. Robertson to do a little research on that for me in regards to what if we had any say in that. What's your take on that? I know that it's approved, for lack of a better term, by the governor's order, but what, do you have concerns about that taking place this weekend?
Yes, thank you for your question. I'll be honest with you. Before the state order came into place, I struggled with the issue of the farmer's market. Back then, there was no farmer market yet, but I knew it was coming. And that's really a tough call because, again, if we want to take the strict approach, we say, well, you know, it should close it. That's, you know, there are too many people that congregate, and there is no way to control traffic. Just close it. On the other hand, we are really going to affect the livelihood of hundreds of farmers who already go through a very hard life to put food on our tables. And these are really the last people I want to, you know, have crops that they can sell at their market. So, you know, perhaps a little bit selfishly, I must say that the governor's order just relieved me of that responsibility because it is allowed under the governor's order, the farmer's market, to operate with some precautions. And as you probably know, local authorities do not have the authority now. Local officials do not have the authority under governor's order to take any more strict measures than what that order already includes. Now, if you ask me my professional opinion, my concern, I do have some concerns. I would very much like to see the farmer's market going. I am a faithful customer of the market every week. But I think there are some measures that could be examined and put in place to make it safer. And, you know, we will work with our staff to see what's possible and what we are allowed to do, again, within the constraints of the current legal order from the state, from the governor's office.
Does it also create any tracking issues in regards to if we have a number of these individuals that are coming from other counties to sell their goods in regards to if someone does contract it and us tracking down and doing notifications? Does it also create that issue as well?
I think that that issue could be easily overcome. Yes, it would be one more step, but our local departments can talk to each other, and the identity of these individuals identity of these individuals would probably be easy to ascertain. If you're talking about the vendors, because they are all registered, and so, you know, if the customer says, these are the places that they visited at the farmer's market, we would be able to trace back who was staffing those places in that particular day. And in regards to the customers, yes, you know, it's never easy to track people down, but it wouldn't cause any more trouble as far as the customer's tracking is concerned than a regular grocery store. It would be the same situation as having an employee in a grocery store and then having to see if we need to track down the customer's where in contact with that person.
Thank you, doctor. I appreciate you answering my question.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I think you hit on something that I was going to bring up, but I won't miss out on this opportunity to tell the doctor, thank you for making it so clear. I get a lot of calls, and they like to listen to you, and they said that you are very, very calming to them, and you make it very, very clear to us what we need to do. So, I want to say thank you for all your hard work. And to the mayor, I just want to say thank you as well. I know this is a tireless job. I know none of us signed up for it, we didn't even get a pamphlet on what to do when something like this happens. So, this is new to all of us. I look at all the criticism, and I just want to say, keep your head up and continue to do the work that you're doing, and I thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad that people find me clear, even though, despite my accent, I always wonder if people can understand me, but it sounds like they can.
Oh, gosh. Okay, Councilman Dobler to be followed by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you. I'll thank you. I'll make this quick. I appreciate, like everybody else, appreciate everything both of you are doing, along with Linda and Dusty and everybody else that's putting in a lot of hours. I wish I could say that in the same accent that you have, doctor, because it's pretty cool. Just one quick question, there seems to be a lot of question, I guess, at this point about wearing masks. I know the CDC's put out some guidelines, but I know a lot of people struggle with that. What's your take on that?
Yeah, again, let me see if I can make it simple, because that's really one confusing Let me be on record right away to say I have nothing against masks. So, people who want to wear a mask in public or, you know, wherever, there's nothing wrong with that. But I want people to understand what they are trying to achieve, what they can expect to achieve by wearing a mask. So, the mask protects primarily the person who wears it, prevents the ejection of particles of, you know, saliva and little droplets when we talk and sneeze and cough, that could then infect someone else who is close to us. And that is particularly important because we know now, we are suspected for a long time, we know now is a fact, that people who are infected with coronavirus can transmit the virus even before they have symptoms. So, once somebody has a, you know, big cough and a fever, we put them in isolation, but people are infectious already a couple of days before they have the cough and the fever. So, when people wear a mask, they are really trying to prevent that, should they be infected already, they are trying to prevent the transmission of the infection to other people around them. What the mask does not do, or at least does not do at the level that would be helpful, is prevent the person that wears the mask from being infected with the virus. Because the virus is so small, the virus, when we cough or sneeze, we eject fairly large particles that may contain the virus. And then those particles are broken down into smaller units that can still contain the virus. Those smaller units can go through the mask. The large particles will be stopped by the mask. So, when we cough, we will contaminate the environment a little bit less if we have these large particles that come with our cough. But when we breathe in, if we have the small particles around us that are infected, that contain the virus, then they can get into our lungs. So, what is the borderline? The borderline is that I think wearing a mask at this point, when we are in a public setting, like a grocery store, for example, probably makes sense. As long as people understand what they're doing with the mask, it's almost like an act of good citizenship, because you are doing that to prevent the people around you. But the person who wears the mask must understand they are no less exposed to a risk of contracting a virus because they're wearing the mask. Or if there is a difference, it's minuscule. So, social distancing remains a must, good hygiene, hand washing remains a must, whether you're wearing a mask or not, to protect yourself. Finally, the mask is absolutely not necessary when you are not in a public place. I see people walking around their dog in solitude, wearing the mask. I mean, if they like that, it doesn't harm, doesn't cause any harm, but it's unnecessary because they are not in contact with anybody, so they can't really infect anybody, even if they cough and sneeze or whatever they do. Does it help? Is it, I know it's complex, it's confusing, because you hear people saying different things. One more thing, there are places in the country where, in fact, the mask is being required and mandated now by local officials. In my opinion, that may make sense when there is a prevalence of infection in the community that is so high that you can expect just about almost anyone being at risk of being infected and being able to transmit the infection to someone else. I don't think we are at the point in our community, as I said before, I think we have more than we have been able to find because testing is still limited, but it's definitely not at the level of prevalence that we have, you know, places like Los Angeles or New York. So, it remains a little bit of a personal choice. I don't discourage it, I encourage it for people to do it, it's a responsible thing to do. I went to the grocery store two days ago, I was wearing a mask. But most important for me, more than seeing more people wearing a mask, is that people need to understand what they are accomplishing by doing that. And that's no substitute for less social distancing and less hand hygiene.
Thank you, doctor.
Thank you, Dr. Petzino. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everybody that has been working so hard, and to you, Dr. Petzino. And the question I have is that the county mandate, if it does get lifted or incrementally, et cetera, will there still be extra precautions that the Shawnee County Health Office will suggest, or I don't know if it can mandate it, for senior living facilities, for senior rehab centers, so that as maybe more people are allowed to go back in there, that we don't end up with things like that happened out of Burlington, Kansas, where the infection can spread so easily in these smaller spaces with seniors living there?
Short answer is yes, there will be. A slightly longer answer, hopefully not too long, the mayor knows that since day one, I've said top of my concerns is nursing homes, because they are the perfect environment for transmission and for outbreaks. And then what you do, I mean, you can't practice social distancing among residents of nursing homes, and you have all the staff who have been exposed, and ideally, you would put them in quarantine, but then there is nobody there to take care of the residents. So, it's really the kind of nightmare for a public health officer. So, I do anticipate that we will keep some measures in place to make sure that we can protect to the extent possible our nursing homes. I also want you to know that we already are working very hard. We have one staff member, one nurse at the health department, who is in contact almost every day with nursing homes. We are just now deploying a weekly survey for all nursing homes in the county that we report if they have any unusual situations with clusters of cases of respiratory disease. And there will also be weekly conference calls with all the nursing homes, and this person at the health department is coordinating all those activities. So, we are taking it very seriously. We have been lucky so far, we haven't seen any outbreak in a nursing home. I know it can happen anytime, and when it happens, it's not necessarily because people did something wrong, it's just nothing is perfect in this world, that's why we still have pandemics.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
We have a lot of, obviously, healthcare workers going into the hospitals and nursing homes, going home, and there's some concern among them, obviously, and others, that they don't know if they've got it or exposed to it, if they are going home, if they've got kids and husbands and wives and all of that. I know some of the healthcare facilities have some plans that are assisting their employees, whether it's discounts at hotels or facilities they've discovered, but I know others do not. Have we looked at, do we have any infrastructure or plan, if there is somebody who's sincerely concerned about that, that they can call the county or call somebody and say, I can't go, I'm worried about going home and exposing my large family, but I don't know where to go? I mean, what are we doing with those individuals?
So, for like first responders specifically, we do have a hotel locally that is a supporter and has provided us rooms for first responders. We also have another hotelier that has also provided support for doctors and medical personnel. When it comes to like other groups in the community, we don't have anything set up yet for that.
Yeah, and you know, the risk that healthcare workers take is something that's very close to my heart, honestly. I mean, my wife is a family physician who works in urgent care, and every time, every day she goes to work, I know she, and she knows that she could be exposed to the virus. I know that our hospitals, and I believe our providers as well, outside of the hospitals, are taking all the possible measures, putting them in place to keep their employees as safe as possible, but again, to be totally brutally honest, there is no personal protective equipment available for everybody. It just isn't there. And at some point, I hope that this country will look back when things are settled and things are done, and ask ourselves, what did we do wrong? Why the richest country in the world did not have enough masks to protect their healthcare workers? As much as I appreciate the efforts of our community to make masks at home, those are not approved for use in a healthcare setting, and we cannot allow, I mean, those are good to go to the grocery store, right? So, they're great, because then the mask that people wear to go to the grocery store now can go to a healthcare worker. But hospitals cannot rely on volunteers to protect their own employees, and to me, it's absolutely unconscionable that as a country, we are allowed to get into this situation. And I hope that at some point, we will look back and we will try to decide what we did wrong.
Councilman, another resource for all of us that are on the line, if anybody that is either a first responder or medical personnel that needs a safe place to go, not to, you know, bring this to their family, call Erin Mahan, who is the interim director over at emergency management, and the phone number is 785-251-4848. We've been working with, you know, the specific groups, and the other thing that we've been doing is also working with the jail to make sure that people are safe over there, too. Additional questions for Dr. Petzino? Seeing no other questions, Dr. Petzino, thank you so much for the amazing work that you do, that the incident command does, Dusty Nichols, Erin Mahan, and Linda Oaks, and the whole team and the volunteers. This is a full court, I don't know what, how do you guys say that, full-on press, full-court press?
Don't forget to pressure yourself within the group.
Nah, it's okay.
It wouldn't be the same without you, but I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
But no, thank you all for what you guys are doing. So, at this point in time, if I am, if my memory serves me right, I think that there is announcements that are coming up. So, city manager, we start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a little more to say tonight, we haven't talked in a little while, so I have a couple of things to carry. I want to report on four different areas that staff and I are spending a majority of our time on. They are our current work posture with regards to our employees, our plans for coming out of the safer-at-home orders to resume normal operations, our federal funding opportunities, and the 2020 budget concerns. So, staff is working from home in some instances in an alternating shift in other situations. We made these initial work plan decisions based on protecting our staff and maintaining the essential services. We wanted to ensure that an infection in a department would not carry through to the entire division or department work group. We have currently about approximately 60 employees working from home. We are keeping up with the basic demand for repairs and work with half-size crews in various departments, with the exception being our police and fire services. They are working their normal shifts. We are losing some productivity, but this provides us the safest posture for the moment. We cannot likely stay in this posture for the long term, so we are working through the next steps. Some of those decisions will be dictated by the extension of the safer-at-home orders and budget decisions that will be made over the next few weeks. Eventually, safer-at-home orders will be lifted, and we will begin to return to normal operations. We are beginning this week to start thinking about what that looks like for each department and the city in general. We need to have a plan for a gradual transition to normal practices of business when the orders are lifted. Jessica Lemondola and her finance staff have been studying the CARES Act and other federal funding programs to see where the city and other organizations in the city may be able to access funds from the various grant programs that have been created. We will make applications for funding in the areas that are possible. Some funding is being provided to us directly because we are an entitlement city, but other funding will require us to make an application for it. More information regarding the funding sources is becoming available each day. Jim Green is keeping track of our expenditures that may be FEMA reimbursable. However, I can say that so far, the materials that we've needed, such as masks, have been able to come from the Kansas Department of Emergency Management's stockpile, so we have not expended additional money for purchases for this event. So far, the CARES Act funding is for new programs and not to replace lost revenue. Although we have not foreseen the magnitude of this current health crisis and the corresponding economic impacts, the city is prepared to respond as a team. Keeping our citizens safe, protecting our employees, and continuing to provide essential services on a daily basis are our priorities right now. Focusing on these priorities, though, is expected to have an impact on the city's budget. The city is not the only industry or field impacted, so we are expecting that the economic pressure will continue for some time, making the recovery a slow process. Good fiscal management from the staff and the buildup of reserves over the last six years allows us to be in a better position to address the financial issue at hand. Our most economically sensitive revenue sources are under extreme pressure. For instance, sales tax makes up an average 32% of the general fund's revenue. We receive approximately 57.5% of our sales tax from retail, and another 11.4% from accommodations for food and food services. Both of these sectors, as you know, have been significantly impacted. We expect that the actual sales tax revenues for the next month or two will reflect our retail concentration. Sales tax revenue could be down 6% for this period. The current revenue forecast requires a quick response, and the members of our team will be called upon to contribute. We will implement a three-pronged approach to address the shortfall. We will look at personnel spending reductions, non-personnel operation changes, and the use of reserves. The finance director and city manager will be working directly with departments to identify those cuts that can be most impactful in addressing the budget issue while preserving the city's ability to deliver essential services. There will be some hard choices, but I'm prepared to address these with my staff. We will continue to monitor local, state, and national guidance, and will adjust our plans accordingly. We are going to get through this.
Thank you, city manager. I will make my remarks brief. I know that a lot of people are very concerned with regards to what's happening right now with the Pico 501 and the meals. I can assure you that Dr. Anderson, Larry Robbins, and I have been in constant conversations since this afternoon, and I think that there may be more things that were not able to be released to the community that may be of support. There may be some gaps, I'm going to have more conversations with Dr. Anderson later on tonight, and then we'll provide a full report on what is available. I can tell you that our community has started to step up in miraculous ways. I've had a corporation that if there is a gap, will not only provide some funding, significant funding in our community, but they are also challenging other individuals to do the same thing, in case we have a gap that we need to fill. We have volunteers galore saying that they're ready to stand up and support us in this process and support our kids, but I would ask everybody to allow us a chance to have a better understanding of what the total amount of the gaps are. We have some information on how many foods were being delivered. I have shared that with the council, and shared with the council some information with regards to what the protocol that school would have to take. But at this time, I would ask everybody just to give us a date, so that tomorrow, we have a better idea on how all of this is coming together. Thank you all for all the work that you guys are doing, the job that you guys have. I think sometimes it's a little bit more difficult. As mayor, I get a chance to work with small groups of people doing things, but you guys are working directly with your constituents every single day. So, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the work that you do. And also, just again, just to mention the significant work that's happening with the county right now. So, thank you all for everything that you guys are doing in our community. And the next person is Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, everyone has already said how grateful and appreciative they are of all the work that the entire governing body, city manager, and emergency management has done during this time. I also want to thank the... I also want to thank the city employees who keep showing up to provide the services and resources for our community. It is truly inspiring to see people willing to still continue to do their job and not take advantage, as it were, of a situation and back off any at all. It seems like they're stepping up and accelerating their efforts to help this community. So I think it's very encouraging. Like everyone else, I really appreciate listening to Dr. Pazzino because he really keeps things calm, clear, concise, and factual without speculation. So that's really appreciated by me. And I thank you to all my colleagues for keeping in touch, sharing the email messages and sharing the information that we all get so that we can put it out to the community in a timely manner. And I just ask all of you to take care of yourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Neger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to send a huge thank you to all of our healthcare workers who are on the front lines and dealing with this, with information that, new information that's coming out every day. That's the most terrific thing about this, is that we are still finding out so much about this disease and how to beat it. That being said, the best way that you can help these healthcare providers is doing the heroic thing and staying home. Make sure you're washing your hands, make sure you're not touching your face, make sure you're coughing into a handkerchief or into your elbow. These are the measures that can keep us all happy, healthy, and safer during this time. I also want to make sure that small businesses know that there are plenty of resources to help you figure out how to work around the CARES Act. Reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and the Kansas Department of Labor, although you might be on the phone for a while, are going to be your best resources to make sure that you can take care of your employees and your loved ones. Thank you all.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll keep this quick. I appreciate what you're doing. I know, I think some of us probably feel once in a while like, and it's hard to figure out exactly what to do. I might just point out that, you know, we're dealing with two crises here. The city manager talked about it a little bit. The healthcare crisis is happening right now. The financial crisis is coming, and every one of us is going to play a big part in that. So I appreciate the city manager and Mr. Gerber starting to take a look at what that might, might be. It's not only how do we get through the rest of this year with diminished revenue, but what, what is the 21 budget look like? So, difficult times ahead, but I know we'll, we'll attack it as a team. And hopefully, we're, we're back together in three or four weeks in person. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
I need to unmute. There we go. Just a couple of quick things. First is, I'll go back to what Councilman Padilla and others have said about the city staff, not just first responders, but obviously, everyone who is out there working for the city is, is, can come in contact with something. And just so everyone knows, and I made sure I put that out there, that we, we have, as a city, made accommodations for folks who may have come in contact so they don't have to go back home if they can't or don't want to, so that they will be safe and can, and can self-isolate for, for several weeks if they need to at no expense of their own. So I'm glad that that's been put in place, and I appreciate staff's work on that. So I think that's very important to continue to support our, our city employees. The second thing is, as many of the folks I know who work in retail or own retail shops, certainly, they want to be open. They want people to shop there. What they don't want, and what I will say to people is, know what you need and make sure it's what you need before you go in someplace. I know that there's things you want, and you love to browse around and wander the aisles, but don't do that right now. Just be, you know, if you can order it online and do pickup, great. If you can call the store and do pickup, please do that. And just know what you need, get in and get out. I know that's tough. That's not our way, as it were. It's not my way, as it were, and I have to fight that also, but, but please do that. Not just for your safety and the safety of everyone there, but particularly employees who are working hard to keep those businesses afloat, but also stay safe. The last thing is, and I'll touch on what the mayor touched on, and I put out a public statement today, and I'll, I'll try to be nice, but I was frustrated with the 501 decision on several levels. It's certainly their prerogative to make that decision. They certainly can. But I was disappointed that it was done without any sort of warning or even much context once that decision was made. I would have appreciated a heads-up as a city that it was happening, so maybe we could have engaged in some conversations about ways we could have helped facilitate that or work with them so that there could have been some sort of transition. And I know that they're in a tough spot, and they're very concerned, obviously, like we are, about their workers and their volunteers, and I do understand that. But I do think that this could have been handled better, and I don't just put it on Dr. Anderson. And I want to be that, there's a whole, just like there's a city council and we have a city manager, there is a school board. And so I have reached out, and I know others that have tried to talk to some of those members to see if we can work something out, to work with them, to, to make sure that the children of our community continue to get fed. As I said today, it shouldn't be upon them in this time to have to worry about where to find a meal if we can help the cause. So, so thank you. That's all I have.
That's a little lesser.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, just want to extend my thanks to the healthcare workers, to the first responders, and to just my son, which scares me to death. And also to the mayor for all her hard work, and Dusty, and Linda, and that. You know, I always try to be a little bit half glass, half-full, you know? And so, a lot of negatives, obviously. Positive is, I've had dinner with my 16-year-old son now more times in the last couple of weeks than I've had in the last couple of years, probably. And I'm seeing a lot of people outside exercising. And, you know, I've been able to kind of stop and, and have some, things have slowed down a little bit. And so, I'm learning some things. So my hope is that everybody, everybody stays safe. And again, I'm going to help where I can, stay out of the way where I need to. And thank you again to everybody for their hard work.
Thank you, Councilman Lesser. We're having some issues with Councilwoman Heller, so we'll have Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman Heller when she's visible.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for all the frontline workers, all those that are without jobs, all those seniors that are afraid, for all of us, just a blessing and prayers in that we will come through this, I believe, better and stronger. I did want to ask one thing, well, just backtrack. With 501, I agree with Spencer. I know that there are a number of issues, Mayor, that you're dealing with right now. After listening in on the Zoom meeting today with media, I can tell you that it seems, for the limited amount that I was listening in, that there are so many holes and so many unanswered questions, and one of those would be about money. And I just find it very unfortunate, even though I know the board and Dr. Anderson and Larry Robbins, you know, I'm sure feel that they're doing the best, that there just doesn't seem to be a whole lot of visibility in this area when their visibility is needed most. And I hope that too much of that doesn't fall on your shoulders, Mayor, because we sure did get a lot of questions that I don't think you weren't able to answer. The second thing, it was brought to my attention, and this is a direct public safety issue that I have real concerns about, but it was brought up to my attention that there was going to be a complete shutdown of any overtime by the Topeka firefighter department. Now, the reason that I bring this up, we already know that the firefighters are shorthanded. And we, I have deep concerns about this because what this lack of allowing overtime for the Topeka Fire Department is possibly bringing up is that there may be cuts in services that we see. I did talk with Brandt for about 10 or 15 minutes this morning because I believe, especially at times like this, full transparency is even more important. And the people of not only District 2, but the people across Topeka need to understand that maybe some of these decisions that are being made could impact public safety with less trucks and less fire stations open. I'm not saying that for sure, but I know that there is deep concern within the fire department. And so I'm wondering, Brandt, if you could possibly walk through what the initiative or the mandate was, was that was put in place by administration so that the Topeka community that's watching can know and we can just be fully transparent in this? I would really appreciate it.
Brandt, at this point in time, since we, we have the cadence of the public comment, if you would like to respond back to Councilwoman, once the rest of the council members are done with their statements, feel free to respond to the Councilwoman, sir.
If you want to continue with, through the rest of the folks, and then I can answer it when they're done.
Okay. Do you have additional comments, Councilwoman?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to add, well, as the remarkable, wonderful things that we're seeing, a lot of reflection, a lot of family time, people talking about gardens, pictures of cooking and so on. It's been quite a struggle, but as, as Dr. Pazzino said, silver lining's coming in ways that I certainly didn't imagine. Included in all the shout-outs, I'd like to shout out to the folks that I also consider first responders, that meeting, the frontline folks, not just the health professionals, but everybody who's working at the grocery stores and, and keeping the essential services open in businesses, anything from a gasket. It's, everybody has really pitched in. I want to add to that list the volunteers. People have been asking, what can I do? Serving meals, they're checking in with phone calls and otherwise on people who are low-key and yellow if you need some help and some credit. As someone else pointed out, life is going on. We had a big fire in District 1, had a big chase and pickup yesterday. People are calling about the regular kinds of things. Almost feel like the odd man out to be asking for business as usual, but people are, are working to cope with that as well, and I appreciate all the efforts. Someone earlier mentioned the support for businesses. I want to mention specifically that Support Topeka is the name of a new website at the greater, and it does have what both the local kinds of things. I don't think you need to commit some local businesses who are donating dollars, all very common, but that, that website has all of our new initiatives and even being people stepping forward. Everyone likes this. They are open for business. That website, they can help people get started. Everybody, thank you, City Manager, for holding it all together, making decisions for the city to manage well. Who's me?
Okay, so, did you conclude your remarks because you were cutting in and out on my screen?
Oh, dear. I'm sorry. I don't know where you lost. I wound up by thanking the city manager for managing our time and the staff issues to put things down.
Awesome. Thank you for your comments. Last but definitely not least, actually, no, we still have Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for our Zoom conferences. They've worked really, really hard on taking all the, trying to get all the nicks and crannies out, and they're pretty proud of that, and I just wanted to tell them thank you for that. Also, I wanted to thank staff for all of, all of their hard work as well. We can't say thank you enough. To me, in this time, you know, I'm trying to find the positive out of all this, and a couple of things. It's just amazing to see people think outside the box and all the things that they're doing, and I think that's really awesome, not only in bigger states, but also here in Topeka. And, and again, you know, Mayor, I can't say thank you enough for, for leading us. I remember Button saying he wasn't no baby-kissing, handshake-and-mayor, and I would have to say the same about you. But I would like to request, I don't know if you guys know this, the mayor gets on every night at 8 o'clock and she reads to the kids. And so I'd like to request the book Corderoy, because it was a big hit in another state. So I look forward to that. My grandson, who's 13, he thinks it's pretty cool, so keep reading. And, and thank you for not only thinking about the adults, but the younger kids as well, because we've got to fill up their time. And I just appreciate all the teachers out there, because this homeschooling is for the birds. But thank you, anyway. And continue to do what you're doing, and let me know if there's anything that I can do behind the scenes. Thank you, everybody. You know, I see it all the time. Be safe, be nice, and be kind. Just those three simple words. It's so easy to criticize, but if you're not in those shoes, and none of us, none of us were prepared for this, none of us, so let's continue to do that. Be safe, be kind, and be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And it's every Sunday, not every day. Deputy Mayor, last word.
All right. I was, I was getting excited. I was, I was going to tune into 9:00 and 8:30. Yeah, I would just echo what my colleagues have said. Every, I mean, staff's been fantastic. Mayor, you've been fantastic. The, the county has, have been great partners in this, so I really appreciate everything. Just the last thing, this is, this is Holy Week, and this, this Sunday is Easter Sunday, and this is probably an Easter Sunday that no one's ever going to forget. So this has been, as Councilman Lesser said earlier, this has been a really unique time. My, my two college-age daughters that I never thought I would really sit down at dinner with, we've had some chances to kind of reconnect, much to their chagrin, I might add. But it's, that really has been a silver lining in this. We've gotten to resement some of those family ties. So I just pray that everyone in District 4, as well as the city and the county, and really, the United States, keeps themselves safe and has a wonderful Easter Sunday. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Really quick, just wanted to give a huge shout-out. One of the regular weekly meetings that I have is with the pastors from different churches. So if you have a pastor that you think that I should be talking to, we have like 30 pastors or so that we meet every Wednesday at 11:00. And then the Catholic Churches meeting is around 11 o'clock as well, but on Thursdays. And we are, we're working with them, and I spoke today with Father Riley from the Archdiocese, and he was wonderful and supportive, not only of our request of a limited amount of people in, in the church body, but also in the funerals and everything else that we have going on. And before we adjourn the meeting, I also want to give a huge shout-out to Nelson Castillo and the volunteers that are doing all of the rumor control. Man, if you guys have not been there, go to Shawnee County rumor control. Sorry that you're hearing my dog drink water in the background. I apologize for that. But if you go there, they're doing an amazing job at making sure that anything that we hear that is, is not adequate is corrected. I am sorry for the noises. It's not me. And so, so thank you to them that are working super hard to make sure that we all have proper information coming out to our community. So with that, if there is, there's no public comment, a reminder for everybody, the public comment has been submitted, and it will be reflected for the record to the clerk. Is there anything that we need to do? Is there anything that we need to do with regards to that?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did you still want me to?
Oh, yes, and you wanted to respond back to Councilwoman Valdivia.
Yes.
City Manager.
Thank you. So this issue started the other day. We instituted a hiring freeze here at the city. We cannot afford to hire to fill positions, and so that was one of the first steps that I took in order to address the budget issues that I see coming. When we looked at that, that also could have included the possibility of not starting a fire academy that's scheduled to start in two weeks. We're looking at six to eight firefighters that would be in that class. We currently are about 19 to 20 positions empty. Part of that was because of vacancy credits, but there were a number that we are down, and so we were looking at replacing. So in order to go ahead and allow and move forward with that hiring, starting that academy, we looked for a way to have some savings in the short term here related to the fire department expenses. And so we looked at the changes that we would make in order to offset that by eliminating some of the overtime that we experience. When we have a engine company or a truck company, we run with three personnel minimum. That's what's required in order to operate that piece of apparatus. So with that, we look at each day, the fire department management looks at how they have staffing set up in each of those areas to ensure that there are at least three people, and they will move people from station to station in order to at least maintain three people so that that piece of equipment can run. What I've asked them to do is do exactly that, cross-level individuals from station to station in order to keep all apparatus at possible operating without incurring callback overtime that would potentially normally be used in some of those situations. So with that, there is that possibility that, as you look at it, that if we cross-leveled every station and we got down to the point where we were three per engine company, and then we had a couple more that didn't show and that we needed, we could look at the possibility of closing down an engine company, which would be anywhere from three to four persons, and that are likely three at that point. And those three individuals could then be cross-leveled to other engine or truck companies within the community. So we would be looking at one station that would potentially be down. Maybe you go to two, but I'm hoping that it would max be one. But we're working through that, and it's really necessary as we go forward with what we're doing related to the savings that we need to see coming forward. And there'll be more detail on the entire plan, but this was something that was going to be starting in two weeks. I felt that it was important, given the level of staffing that we had, that we go ahead and continue the academy and go ahead and hire and get those individuals in place. We know that potentially in another quarter, we would have additional retirements in the fire department, which would then force us well below that level in the long term. So that was the reasoning behind moving forward with these measures. And I can tell you that there will be others that we'll need to do going forward that are tough like this. But at this point, we're monitoring it. The chief and I are discussing what the impacts are. We'll be monitoring how often that happens and where it works and what the impact might be. We met with the union to help determine what station would be the first station that they would shut down. And so those discussions occurred with the union members, and they're aware of that, and had time to provide input into that decision. So that's where we're at.
Thank you so much, sir. Yes, Councilwoman Valdivia.
Okay. I just wanted, in response to that, Brent, you were kind of breaking up, and I apologize, but it's real tinny sounding with you guys. And I just want to clarify that I was under the impression that there was to be no overtime period from this point on, and also the station that would be affected with closing first. I think in our conversation with Station 1, which is in District 2, and also looking at possibly Truck Number 9. I think that, and again, I cannot even imagine the job you're having to do with finding where we're going to get the money to do what we need to do. That is, that's not a criticism that way. But to look at cutting public safety right off the bat in the times that we are in, I understand that they're not, that the fire department is not doing the COVID responses, that it is AMR. But we understand, too, that there has been a number of fires in this city, and we have more people at home in neighborhoods where they depend on these smaller companies. And I understand that this is nothing that we're going to be able to have a vote on. I understand that totally. I just want to be very vocal in saying I do not agree with it because I think that public safety is something that should always and is always touted by everyone on the council and councils before this to be the last thing to get cut or not to be cut, period. And I don't know what other savings that can be done that can leave that in place where all of these stations can remain open. I appreciate you going over some of the conversation that we had today, and I just want to make it on the record, I do not agree with this. So thank you, Mayor.
All right. That being said, there's no public comment. The public comment has been recorded by the clerk. This meeting is adjourned.